Right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting for the Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee. I will call the meeting to order and this meeting will be held virtually and recorded. I think we'll jump right into, I don't believe there's roll call for this, is that right?
No.
All right. Great. We will jump right into public comments. Persons may speak for three minutes about an item that is not listed as a public hearing on this agenda and please state your name and address for the record.
Just give it one minute. We do have a few attendees.
Yep.
No hands raised.
Got it. Um. Two more seconds. All right. And then, yeah, we'll move on to the presentation from our friends over at Interface. I see Smith Group and a few of the other folks from Interface here. So.
Yeah.
While they join as panelists.
While, um, while they are coming over. Thank you for this opportunity. I thought it was a good time for an update. The members of our consultant team here, you've got Stacy Chen and Jamie Granger from Interface Studio. You've got Oliver Kylie from Smith Group and Kevin Hively from, hi-hively, excuse me, from Nigret Partners. And we had an opportunity to have our first meeting with the Steering Committee. I know a couple of the members of this group also had the opportunity to participate in that as well. And so we thought it was also a good time to present this, some of the initial data findings and background that the consultant team has been putting together with you as a group. And as noted, I think this is also a great opportunity for Frank to us to record this presentation and share it with anybody who's interested. So it's sort of a nice, happy coincidence for, for me as well. So we're gonna walk through just sort of a status update, just as a reminder where we are with the project. This is really the year where the rubber hits the road. We're putting together the plan this year. And so we've got a community survey that's out right now. The team will give an update on where we are on that survey. Go through some, like I said, some of the preliminary data analysis that we've put together. And then some opportunities just for some feedback from you at the end. Or certainly any questions that you have about where things stand. I also, before I forget, not on your agenda, but I just want to give you a heads up. As part of moving forward, what we did this year is we've actually reduced the cadence of our ordinance revisions committee meeting to every other month. And so my intention is actually is to plug those opposite months with regular meetings of this committee for touch points throughout this comprehensive plan process. So I'm sorry if you were relishing those as open Tuesdays. Otherwise, over the calendar year, I'm going to fill them back up here soon. So keep a lookout for those. Before I jump into it, I guess I want to check in with Stacy and Jamie, who's gonna be running the PowerPoint? And I can make sure you got all the appropriate permissions. All right.
I'll run it.
Cool.
And I'll see this.
Take it away, team.
Great. Thank you so much. Um. Let me make sure I can see. Okay. I am happy to see you guys again. Since this is being recorded and we have members of the public, we are just gonna do a very brief about the comprehensive plan and our process. But we're really gonna spend the bulk of our time on the key issues and then have time for discussion as well. And as you'll see throughout the presentation, we have pauses throughout that key issue section, so we can have some questions and discussion during that section as well. So let's jump in. What is a comprehensive plan? This group doesn't really need this, but we just wanted to quickly touch in on this as a reminder to the public. The comprehensive plan is adopted by city council. It is written by the planning commission members of whom are here. And it really lays out the city's vision for its future. And it's generally a long-term horizon. You know, we're talking about what the city will look like in 20 or 30 years, right? Not, not just like, you know, five or 10 years down the road. So we're really thinking about the decisions that we're making in this plan. What it's going to do for the city in about 20 years. And so that covers how we use the land and the policies and regulations and the investments that are needed to get there. The plan also clearly must address three values that were set forth by city council. Those are on the screen, affordability, sustainability, and equity. Next. It will replace five existing plans that are currently part of the comprehensive, the current comprehensive plan. And it will also incorporate three existing plans that are newer that you see here on the screen. Next. City Council also had very specific directives for what they would like to see this comprehensive plan do. I'm not gonna read all five of it, but just to touch upon them. There are five very important things that we will be keeping in mind as we go through this process. One, making sure that we are thinking about carbon neutrality as a part of this plan. Two, looking at densification in single-family zoned areas of the city. Three, streamlining the current zoning districts, of which there are very many. And thinking about how we can build in flexibility and modernize these districts. Four, is really thinking about the values as a way to make, to make decisions for land use. And then five, thinking about ways that our land can help repair past harms that were based in some land use policies and, and regulations. So why is this important? A very big reason why this process is very important is because it can help us talk as a community about what, where, when, and why, right? Like, what are the investments, improvements, and changes we want to see? Where should they be? Why they're important? So we already have some values that have been spoken about, but we add through this process will most likely develop more. And why those are important is because we want to use a values-based decision-making process. It's very important that the city, as it moves forward, uses this plan and the values embedded within it to justify decisions that it makes for land use and that it can be used to balance competing interests in the city. And then this here as an overview of our schedule. So we are here, winter of 2024, in the middle of doing online surveys and gearing up for public events. Prior to this, we spent the summer and the fall getting to know Ann Arbor. Smith Group obviously is in Ann Arbor. But some other team members came in for some tours and interviews. And in the meantime, we've also been doing a lot of data analysis. So now we're getting, getting ready to talk to the public. And our plan is to spend the rest of the year rounding out those discussions, working on visions, strategies, with the aim of developing a plan at the end of the year for adoption in the beginning of 2025. Okay, so now we're gonna launch into key issues and I'm gonna have other members of the team kind of round robin through the key issues and topics that we'll be talking about. So I think first up is Jamie.
Yeah, thanks, Stacy. So we've really been taking everything we've been hearing from our conversations and from the data that we've been gathering and really outlining some really high-level key issues. So it's by no means an exhaustive list, but really what we think are gonna be the most important topics that will come up throughout this process. So, you know, we're really tasked with thinking about the future development and land use of the city, but we thought it would be important to really take a step back and think about how the city has developed over time and now we really got to where we are today. So we've been pulling some historic maps, looking at historic population census data. We've made a series of slides really showing a map on the left, chart on the right, kind of tracking the population over time. So here we are in Ann Arbor in 1874. You'll notice the dotted line is the existing city boundary is really used for reference in these maps. Obviously, the Huron River was there, but Ann Arbor basically consisted of downtown and adjacent neighborhoods. The university had moved from Detroit at this point. But Ann Arbor is really, you know, kind of a small town. There are only about 7,000 people at that time. Jumping ahead to the 60s, you can see the city has grown significantly. The highways have been developed. The university expanded to the athletic complex, the medical complex, the north campus. And the city started to fill out a little bit. But there were still significant portions of the city that had yet to be developed, particularly north and east of the Huron River and south now down near Brierwood. And it really went from a town to a city and about 100,000 people. So leading up to the 40s, the population of the student body population in Michigan and the city kind of went hand in hand as the student body population grew, the city grew. But really, in the 40s to the 70s, there was kind of a divergence and the city population grew at a much higher rate. So in that timeframe, the student body population accounted for about 19% of the overall city growth. And then here we are today. So the cities continue, or the universities continue to expand and the city has pretty much been fully built out. But you'll notice in the 70s, the population really kind of plateaued. And again, you see a strong correlation between the growth of the university and the growth of the cities since the 70s. So previously, from the 40s to the 70s, the student body population counted for about 19% of the overall growth. And in the past 50 years, it's counted for 75% of the overall growth. We thought it was important to, to look at this in the broader context as well. So the, the green on this chart is the same as on the previous charts, Ann Arbor population. We layered in the Washtenaw County population as well. So again, you can see the growth up to the 70s, the plateau in the city. But you'll notice that the, the counties continued to grow at a pretty significant rate. So there's, you know, a few conclusions you can take from this data. You could say, you know, Ann Arbor's, there's not strong demand to live in Ann Arbor. There's, it's not attracting people, there's not jobs. But you know, that's not what we're hearing from our conversations, from the data. Ann Arbor continues to be a strong job center. The population is, and property values continue to go up. There's still strong demand for, to live in the city. So, you know, it's more likely a supply issue and that the, the city has really been built out. There's not the place to develop new housing that there was in those periods of strong growth in the city. We wanted to take a, a deeper dive into this and look at when the year structures were built. So the assessor's data tracks the year a building or property was, was built. They also break it down by if it is residential property or commercial property. So the map, you can see the same timeframes that we're talking about and the chart tracks the total numbers of those buildings as well. You can see a large number of the buildings in the city were built in the 40s to 70s timeframe. Less so in the, the past 50 years. And it's also interesting to note the change in dynamics of the, the type of buildings in that up until about 2000, the vast majority of buildings built were residential in nature. And in the past 20 years, it's almost a 50-50 split between residential and commercial. So there's a, a few caveats to this data, one being this is tracked on a property level, not a, a unit level. So, you know, an apartment building counts the same as a single-family house. And also the assessor classifies apartment buildings or multifamily as commercial, not residential. So that can be a factor and, you know, is driving a lot of the commercial development. But it's interesting to see how the types of properties have changed over time, be it a commercial or apartment buildings in more recent times. So it, it was important for us to not just think about you know, the growth of the population, but really the composition of population as well. So we did that in a few different ways. One, by looking at age group. So this is the change in the population by age over the past 20 years. With a few different age groups, under 18, 18 to 34, 35 to 64, and 65 and older. So you can see strong growth in the 18 to 34, you know, it's really the student body population, either undergrad or graduate student. Significant growth in the 65 and older. That's more likely attributed, not necessarily people from that age group moving into Ann Arbor, but people aging into that population group. And then you see a decline in the 35 to 64 and under 18, so really that family age. So essentially what we're seeing is growth in student population and aging population and declining families. We looked at race and ethnicity, change over the past 40 years, so since 1980. You can see a decline in the white population as a percent of the overall population. The sets in blue, the 84 to 66%. You'll see kind of a marginal decline in the black population, red, from 9% to 7%. There's a marginal growth in the Hispanic population and then a pretty significant growth in the Asian population in the green. So, you know, this is important context for us, but it's, it's also important to think about how the, this, the dynamics of this play out spatially as well. This is particularly true for the black population in that when you, you know, you just look at this number over across the city and you would say the black population hasn't changed significantly. And that's true from a total number perspective. But where they live in the city has changed significantly over time. So when you think of the Water Hill, Carytown, Old Fourth Ward, really the part of black culture in the community in Ann Arbor really peaked in the 70s, about 45% of the population was black. And now today, it's about 8%. And when you look on a map, you can see where it's shifting. So the left is the 1960s and the map on the right is 2020. So the darker color denotes a higher percentage of the black population. So again, you can see in that Carytown, Old Fourth Ward, Water Hill, dark percentage. And then on the right, that essentially going away and the population being more dispersed towards the edge of the city and southwest and north. So, you know, that's gonna be important in context for us considering, you know, the, how that impacts population who used to be adjacent to downtown, accessible to amenities and jobs, some of those valuable real estate in the city and now living kind of on the fringes of the city. So it's gonna be important context for us and, you know, making future land use decisions, particularly, you know, one of the outlines from city council to think about some of the policies that impacted certain populations. So this is our first pause. So I'll stop here for a sec, see if there's any questions or we can kind of keep powering through and talk more at the end.
Commissioner Lee, do you want the consultant team just to, like, how do you want to manage questions or do you want to sort of solicit?
Uh, yeah, sure. I can help solicit. Commissioner Dish.
Thanks, Commissioner Lee. I have one question, just because you were moving quickly and I couldn't type quite fast enough. Were you saying that when you talked about the percentage of the population that the University of Michigan population accounts for? Did you say that recently it's been accounting for 75% of the overall growth of Ann Arbor's population?
Yeah, that's correct. Since this happened, yeah.
That's, that's really not healthy. Okay, so, I mean, not that I don't like students, it's just that that means that you're not having, like, a lot of our growth is really not people who come here and stay here. And then that, and then you showed us the family stats going down. So that, that's honestly, that makes me really worried, okay? But you can tell me not to worry that much if you want to. Then the other thing that I wanted to ask, you said that the overall decline in back, black population has been from 9% to 7%. Is this decline in percentage of Ann Arbor's population? And is it, but what is the decline in real numbers?
Yeah, so we, we showed it as a percent of the overall population. You know, we have the numbers. I, I don't know specifically, but, you know, just, you know, eyeballing it on this chart. You know, I don't think the, the overall numbers have, have declined significantly. You know, as the population's grown, that population is, accounts for a smaller percentage of the overall population.
Right, right. So it would be good to have those numbers. And it's interesting that, obviously, that, that also white people as a percentage of the overall population have declined as well. But it's much more significant if you're already a small percentage of the population to decline to a smaller percentage of the population. I think you feel more minoritized by that, even if the decline of overall numbers isn't as large. I mean, because I don't think white people in Ann Arbor feel like they are becoming scarce. But black people in Ann Arbor do have the perception that they are becoming scarce. And they will, you know, the way they see it is exactly, exactly what the maps say. We have been dispersed. And I think we know that some of that is because of the building of the development of cooperative housing, because that's where, and I'm, if I'm messing something up, Mr. Leonard, please jump in. But some of the areas where the black population dispersed, got dispersed to was moving into those cooperative housing zones that were created. So this is all stuff we need to think about. And I'm not sure what conclusion exactly we draw from it, because, well, no, I'm not gonna go any farther. I really, I think it's really hard evidence to tell a story that does justice to the injustice that happened. If that made any sense.
Yeah. Just adding on to that thought real quick, would be interested to see an overlay of park access. I know that we have one with the radial access to parks. I think it's something like 1,000 feet or something along those lines. Also, what's our spend on parks and recreation? And how does that correlate with, to, to the kind of like movement? As well as to see overlays of, because I think we readily have that data. So, and then to try and correlate that with, you know, if we have health outcomes data associated with that, just as it kind of, again, translation to access. I mean, the, the takeaway I have from just seeing the slides that we have so far is, you know, we have to continue to invest in, you know, transportation infrastructure. I, I know that we're talking about Vision Zero and the integration thereof. Making sure that they have access to parks, recreation, as well as transport to work and things of that nature. But, but yeah, great observation, Councilmember Dish. And then I will go to Commissioner White.
Thank you. Can we see the slide that has the line chart that shows the African-American population precipitously dropping? Great. So one thing I think would be helpful if this is a public-facing document in the future is some comment on what we see happening here, not just, because otherwise it just looks like there's been a very intentional shift in the city to reduce its African-American population. So how does that, what does that actually mean? Does that mean that there were homeowners in what was considered the old Fourth Ward before they renamed it Water Hill? Carytown, did those individuals just lose their homes? Did they get priced out because of taxes? Did the population just die? So what, what happened to account for this sort of precipitous drop from 45% in the 70s when the city was actually considering laws around zoning that said, you know, we wanted to make these one acre lots to make it difficult for African-Americans to live in the city? And then you see that, you know, sort of being debated at city council in the 70s when the population is high. But now we look across and we see this, this really big drop. So that's one. The second thing that was striking to me is is it possible, as you all look into this data, to see if any of the deed restricted housing in the city maps to any of these drops or to population? And then as a secondary to that, are there historic districts, as we think about the comprehensive plan, that had deed restrictions in them? Because when you talk about equity in the city, if we have frozen homes inside a deed, inside a historic district that had a deed restriction attached to it, that, that's a clear articulation of like, oh, this is why these populations were not able to be here. And then we do that in perpetuity. So we actually continue to exclude population because we put it inside the historic district. And I think as we think about the, the, the way we want to see the city, it, it may mean we need to look inside those historic districts to make sure that they don't have deed restricted housing that are a part of them. And if they do, I think we should daylight that. And I know that at the university, they have a initiative. And I was just told last week that they have finished looking at all of the deeds and now they're starting their next phase of trying to bring those records to the, the city clerk. So those were just some of my questions as I look at this. And then if you can go forward to the map where you show the concentration and then you show the dis, dispersment, so this would be, it would be interesting to see an, an overlay here of the historic districts if there were deed restrictions in this kind of map as well. And you can go back as far as you need to. I'm, I'm not really that concerned about the time. I'm just trying to see how decisions at the policy level have affected people's access to housing. And then my last sort of feedback in here is it would be helpful to see the zoning as we overlay all of these maps. And maybe they're not on the primary map, but there, there's a, a zoning map that is attached to it so that we can see the progression of the zoning. I think, Mr. Leonard, you and Planner Kelly did a presentation where you sort of walk through Ann Arbor's history and say, you know, at the start, there were eight pages, then it went to 11, then it went to 280 in our UDC. And now I think we sit somewhere comfortably around 320 pages. And I think that that is, that is a decision that we have made. We have made building in the city challenging. And that can be, that is hidden in this process. I think people just think, oh, this is just the way it is, and it's not. There have been decisions that have been made at every stage to make it impossible for us to densify the city. And someone and something is behind that. And I just don't want that to be missed as we're in this conversation. I think it's very important, at least from my point of view, that that gets daylighted.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, this is great. Thank you for this discussion. Commissioner White, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the overlay that you were asking. I, I heard loud and clear the overlay of historic districts as a memorialization of deed restrictions with racial covenant restrictions and the like. And I want, and then you, you mentioned other historic, I, I just want to make sure, I don't know of other deed restrictions. We have, we regulate historic districts, right? But I just wanted to make sure if you were talking about something else or just, just the, the primary question that you were interested in was overlaying where we've added that additional regulatory requirements to areas that have those private deed restrictions that Justice and Deed, you know, have done such great work in sort of memorializing. Or was there another property record question that I missed in that besides those two things?
I don't, I don't think so. And thanks for clarifying. I think what I'm, what I don't know is do we have deed restrictions inside our historic districts? I think that is the question that I'm asking.
Racially restrictive deed restrictions that are also present where we have put a historic district? Racially restrictive deed restrictions that are also present where we have put a historic district.
Yes, because if there's a racial deed restriction, then we have memorialized that restriction and brought it forward. And so then when we talk about equity, we can't talk about equity without undoing that. Because now it is protected, and so it, it, it's, it's here forever unless we remove the. The historic district, so people couldn't access that house, so you're just bringing that inequity forward is what I'm trying to articulate. And I don't, I don't think. As I think about equity, it's important for us to figure out. How, I just don't want this conversation to be at a, at a, a high level. I want it to be at like. Oh, you couldn't buy this house and now there's a historic district on top of it. And so you've memorialized this, this access to wealth and you've only transferred it. In this way. It, it doesn't say about how it is today, of course, I can buy any property that I want to in the city. Uh, because of the um. Supreme Court decision, which given our current Supreme Court, the rules could change. And those restrictions could be put back in place. Um, and if, if that happens, boy, that, that would just be. Revealing, revelatory, uh, in much the way that we're dealing with uh, the action of this court in other spaces. Thanks, Mr. Leonard.
Uh, Councilmember Dish.
Thank you, I just wanted to just. Follow up a couple of things, so. Just to specify the, the side that, the slide that precedes the one that we're looking at right now where it shows the forty-five percent decline. This is not, this is a decline just in the historic neighborhoods, so. It's showing the. It's showing the concentration of the black population in the city center and then it's dispersment, dispersion, dispersment. Over time, there hasn't been a, like, Ann Arbor was never forty-five percent African American and it did not decline to eight, so. We just need to make sure that no one looking at this slide would think that, because that wouldn't be right. So. The, the other thing is that. So by nineteen sixty, I don't think you could enforce. Racial covenants anymore. Does anybody remember the year that they became unenforceable?
Was it sixty-eight that the law changed?
It's be, I think it's before that, it's not.
Then would it be sixty-three? I'll look it up.
Yeah, and I, I, I thought about raising that, Council, uh, Cusher Dish, but. I think, I think there, I think your question does relate, I think a lot of the. Racially restrictive covenants were not necessarily tied to the origination of the city. Um, there was sort of, if I recall from the Justice and Deed data, there was sort of a period of time that they were most prevalent. And in fact. I would suspect that most of that time period ha- happened after a lot of the development of the Carytown neighborhood. But I don't want to jump to that conclusion. We will work to do that overlay and help answer that question regardless of when that law changed. I think that that is, that's, that's definitely data that we can, we can put together.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'm not, I mean, obviously, I'm well aware that um. Redlining took place. Through the real estate industry, through the fairhouse, uh, through the, the FHA. Long after racially restrictive covenants were no longer legal, but what I'm seeing is that they were struck down um. By the Supreme Court in nineteen forty-eight, but they probably weren't. Effectively ended until sixty-eight with the enactment of the Fair Housing Act. But they were struck down by um. The court in forty-eight, so. I definitely, it would be great to know. Whether there were restrictive covenants in the historic neighborhoods. I would also want to know where the majority of our restrictive covenants lie in the rest of Ann Arbor. Because there's a clear pattern that African Americans. Were concentrated in the center and then they're dispersed to very strange areas that are not adjacent. And I'm wondering how much housing. Um, between nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty in particular, because that's when you get a huge dispersion. I wonder how much housing was closed to them by redlining at that time. So how limited were they in where they could move when they left downtown? Um, and that certainly the practice of redlining was rampant um, in the seventies and the eighties.
I don't, I don't profess to be the, the best at this research, but I have done a fair bit of. Trying to find where there are records about redlining and I, I have yet to find that map for Ann Arbor. I think it definitely happened though through FHA, and so um, I think that. I think that the deed restrictions are a place that we can show some very direct geographical correlation. Um, I think that. Part of it is probably sort of, I'm thinking about sort of how this slide that's up right now is, 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 is. Being considered by the commissioners, it, I think. That same map that we're talking about will benefit with some context about how some of the other things that were happening. In the housing industry at that time were having an adverse effect, even if we don't have that. Here's the redlined Ann Arbor map like you can find for some other cities.
So I know that my house was built by an African American family and I think it was sixty-five. And they built it here on the north side because they could not buy property elsewhere in the city. So, or there were other, you know, this was one of the few places where they could, so. It would be great to have more than anecdotal, and so you know that research that um. I forgot his name right now, but it'll come back.
Robert Goodspeed, I think.
No, 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 not, not him. Uh, this is a student that Brett and I worked with who did some research for us on zoning. And I think one of the things that we found was that. It may not have been in Ann Arbor zoning directly. But definitely things like minimum lot sizes and setbacks. Were getting implemented in the seventies and eighties as our more peripheral areas were getting developed. They were getting developed upon a, on a suburban and exclusionary model, and so. It'd be great to have more, you know, we got into some of that when we fixed our four, when we um, when we reduced. Yeah, when we reduced the lot sizes for um. Whichever, was it? Thank you. So we, we learned some of that. That it was zoned to, you know, the city was zoned to permit something, but then the council. Changed the minimum lot sizes so that the zoning actually couldn't be used the way it had been written. And so that's a, that is exactly the story, I think, um, that Commissioner White is looking for, because that's an exclusionary story. But it's not written on the face of zoning, it's written in the, uh, it's, it's written in these. Things that we deal with, the nitty gritty that we deal with all the time, which is setbacks and minimum lot sizes, so. We need to look at that.
Thank you, um, Commissioner White.
Um, I think you're correct, uh, Mr. Leonard, that there aren't redlined uh, maps for Ann Arbor because the municipality was too small. But they used other mechanisms like um, insurance and then fire protection. So um, those maps do exist, which uh, will reveal how the. Uh, racialization was built into the system, but using sort of a race neutral way. Because they weren't able um. To get uh, fire insurance, which then prevented them from being able to get a mortgage, which then prevented them from being able to buy the home. Um, the, you know, there's a professor out of the University of Chicago who did a talk and I'll send it to you to distribute to our team. On how those uh, fire maps were used um, as a, a placeholder for uh, the FHA. Um, so in the um, GSI that U of M has. You can see all the racial uh, restrictions, so they're on Miller, they're in Virginia Park, they're in Amandinger. Um, I don't know, they're on near Da- uh, Dexter and Jackson, so I don't know how they come into the Old West Side and. Those historic districts, but you can see those um, plots and they've color coordinated them. And so if we can just overlay that, I think is helpful, and then my last point on this, which I think is helpful uh, for this part is. Have you all looked at all at how the city restricted the building of apartments? Throughout the city, because that was another mechanism to uh, do race neutral. Um, restrictions within the city. So we know we have a, a prevalence of R one throughout the city. Or our residential single detach, but uh, there were also restrictions put in place to prevent. Um, quadplexes, triplexes, or apartments as a, a mechanism. To do the same sort of racialize um, restriction of housing. And so if, if that's some, something someone might be interested in looking at, as you look at this equity question. I think that that um. Would be helpful, like, when did we stop allowing people to build? Density in so-called residential neighborhoods uh, within the city, and I think. We can probably start to map some things against that, that would help us see why we see the population the way that we do. So thanks so much for, for this. Um, this is a deep nerdy dive. And, and I, I really appreciate it, the space to have this conversation uh, with you.
Yeah, thank you. Um. I think, yeah, very important conversation for us to have, um, you know, as far as the equity portion of this, right? On undue seek to repair past land use policies um, that has resulted in the exclusion of people being a specific resolution, so I think it's important for us. Cover. Um, I also do want to make sure that we focus on um, you know, carbon neutrality, fewer zoning district adaptability, et cetera. So um, with that, um, I think we've taken a, a good amount of time to keep moving with the presentation.
Here, I'll um, turn it over to Kevin Hively to talk through these next few slides.
Thanks, um, before I begin. I just want to do a couple of caveats. Uh, the first is that the state of Michigan, as which is not unusual for most states, does not report economic information at. Uh, typically a city level. And most of the time you have to rely on it from the federal government. Um, and one of the dilemmas is, is that it lags, uh, typically lags a few years, so you're actually looking back and. And not looking forward. And so the other thing too is that the numbers are really estimates, but the numbers that you're going to see feel like they're. A decimal point accurate, and I would not take them at that level, so if you see a number that says seven thousand six hundred and fifteen. It, don't ask me, well, why do you, why couldn't it be seven thousand six hundred and twenty? And it's because it's an estimate and it's usually the midpoint of whatever that estimate is. Um, that the feds have done or that we've had to calculate, so I just wanted to start that off as the caveat. So next, Jamie. So there's ninety-four thousand jobs, um, thirty-seven percent are tied to the University of Michigan. If you look at the gold dots or the maze dots, I guess, the way to say it is. You can see where the jobs are concentrated right now. Um, one of the things that's important for context is that the Ann Arbor region, not just the city, but the region. Is the fourth most economically dependent on anchor institutions, which includes universities and hospitals. Uh, in the country and is three times that of the national average. So you're, it's like, I think Michigan, I think Ann Arbor is like a three point two one and the nation is at, is at one. Next. Um, most of the people who work in Ann Arbor commute into the city, it's seventy-six thousand plus. Um, eighteen thousand plus residents leave the city for jobs and only about seventeen thousand work. There's a couple of important things here, which begs this big question. Which is what proportion of the workforce should be, would be able to house in Ann Arbor, um, if you think about what the presentation that Jamie gave where. You know, the city's around a hundred and twenty thousand people, about fifty thousand more students, that means you have about seventy thousand people who are. Residents, if you will, permanent, more permanent residents in quotes. You don't have enough people in the city, or you barely have enough people in the city to actually fill all of your jobs. Um, and uh. And so that is one of the questions to think about. Actually, you don't have enough people to fill all the jobs if every single person who was a resident could work. So that becomes an interesting question, particularly as you think about things like Commissioner Lee had pointed out, like carbon neutrality, transportation, all those other issues. Which is how much of our workforce of the resident. People who work in Ann Arbor. Should there be a goal or a target of how many should be housed in Ann Arbor? And as again, at seventy-six thousand, one way to think about that, that's effectively doubling the resident population, if you will. Next. And what should we be thinking about for jobs? These are the current areas, um. The blue is basically the downtown district, which is also the city's smart zone. You can see where the hospital in Michigan are the bottom. Uh, at the very bottom in the south is the opportunity zone, um, and is the only opportunity zone in the city. And to the northeast is uh, where the innovation district is, which by the way, does not overlap with the smart zone. And these are, we just wanted to point these out because these are the areas that the city is already. Um, are going to be natural job generators or where the city or the university have um. Either making plans or have created incentives for uh, high wage jobs, and then the purple. Uh, that you see are where the land has been zoned for research and development. Next. Questions?
Uh, do you know how recent that uh, seventy-six thousand people commuting into Ann Arbor has been?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, um, and how, um, because obviously the advent of. Um, remote work and hybrid work changes kind of the dynamics of commute patterns overall. Do you see that kind of factoring into this at all?
Uh, it could, if you were a different kind of city, because you're so university and hospital intensive. It probably hasn't had that much of an impact.
Gotcha, no, understood. To answer your question succinctly, um, I think SEMCOG defines the average commute time as twenty-seven minutes. And given that, you know, there's a substantial chunk of carbon emissions coming from transportation, absolutely, housing. And placing and mopping up trips to try and place housing next to jobs certainly should be a priority, so, uh, Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, Kevin, I had a question. I presume this is a relatively small slice, but. When you're, when we're talking about the university pop, student population versus sort of residents. A lot of those students do work and some portion of those ninety-four thousand jobs probably do link up with those. Students. Am I right on that, or?
Some, those are the, those are the full-time only jobs. If, if you included part-time jobs, the, the number's actually bigger and those are probably a good proportion of those are probably filled by students.
Okay, so that ninety-four is like, is just full-time and that's why.
Jobs, yeah, primary, they're known as primary jobs.
Permanent residents.
You probably have, I think it's a hundred and eleven thousand jobs in the city overall, but that includes, you know, the. Hospital, the part, the quote-unquote part-time jobs, but they're not people's primary jobs.
And while commissioners are just thinking if they have questions, I would just point out that. One of the, one of the conversations that happened with the context of um, some of our stakeholder discussions was. That reliance on institutional economies. Um. One perspective on that is. Man, diversifying our economy would be fantastic. Because hedging changes and industries and the like is going to be really beneficial. On the flip side. Um, being so tied to an institutional economy probably has a stabilizing effect. That's why when you look at. Probably some of the ways, like when you look at some of the communities, what they experienced in like two thousand eight. Um, Ann Arbor had some economic trauma from that. But not to the extent that some other communities might have, or even benchmark communities that were less reliant. On anchor institutions that have had more of an economic stability, so um, I just raised that, I don't, it's, that was. I thought it was an interesting conversation um, that we've had.
Yeah, and it's a great segue actually into our next section. So hearing no Commissioner Lee, there's no other questions?
No, uh, but I don't want to stray too far from the discussion regarding economic diversification, because I think it is an important one. It's an inter- interesting point that you make, Mr. Leonard, um. Uh, my, my question would be, when it says it's the fourth most economically dependent on anchor institutions in the country, like, is that? Is that kind of like rainforest, is that limited to uh, cities of a certain size, or is that literally like?
It's literally every city, so it includes, so I believe ahead of you is. Corvallis, Iowa City, it's the university towns, basically. It's the Federal Reserve Bank of Phil-, it's the Federal Reserve Bank of Philadelphia does this anchor institution study.
Yeah.
Um, by comparison. By comparison, New Haven, Connecticut, which is dominated by Yale. Is like, I think, like the one point six range as an example. Don't hold me to that number, but it's, it's not, it's not in the top fifty, so.
Gotcha. And so what this says is essentially, yeah, the vast majority of jobs are dominated by only Toyota Research Center, you.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's economic value, wages and employment.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty good. Anybody else have any questions before we move on? Think you're good, Kevin. Thank you.
So the next thing we want to talk about is basically, basically the fiscal side of the house. But primarily the revenue side of the house, which is where this issue of diversification. Plays potentially a bigger role than necessarily the job component of it, as Brett was saying, that it's nice to have a fairly stable job base. But it has implications for how you pay for things and the very, and the. Long list of ambitious goals that the city has and how that gets paid for, given that you don't tax income. Some cities in Michigan do, you guys don't. So you're property tax dependent place. So next. Jamie, so if you look at right now, fifty two percent of your revenue is dependent upon property taxes. Fees are another big chunk state. And then there was this, there's this blip that's still running through the system, which is basically. All of the recovery program dollars, which is why the Fed number is so big, that will probably shrink over time. The property tax base. If you look at how that's cut up, the residential, we looked at twenty thirteen and twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three is in maize. The residential property tax base has shrunk as a percentage of overall, it's at sixty three percent. Commercial is at thirty three, has gone up to thirty three percent. Now, as Jamie pointed out earlier. One of the dynamics in Michigan is that multifamily, large-scale multifamily housing is considered, is taxed as commercial property. So part of that gain is come, is actually residential. And then you can see industrials very little and it's personal property tax things that are this small. On a percentage basis, your percentage of residential contributing to the overall property tax base as on the taxable value side. Is a little high, like Grand Rapids is in the high fifties, I think, if I remember correctly. So you're a little bit on the higher side. Next. And what's, there's a couple of things that have happened here and part of this is how Michigan taxes residential property. So on an assessed value basis, the city has grown by about seventy four percent increase. Which is, which is a pretty good clip. It's up, it's over nine and a half billion dollars now. But on a taxable value basis, because the taxable value is capped on the residential side in Michigan. It's only grown by fifty eight percent. And what's happened, what the interesting thing is that commercial taxable values and residential property tax values, they've been, they're closing. But again, that's in part driven by residential. And the residential commercial properties. And one of the things that we all have to remember is that property taxes get factored into affordability of housing. So that's something that's important to think about. And as a community gets older. And that's very dependent upon property taxes, that has a whole series of implications going forward, particularly residential property taxes. Next. And so one of the issues on the, one of the issues for the city is that there's a lot of taxes on property. It's forty two percent of of the acreage of the city. But what's really interesting and really, really important to note is that the university. Is only twenty eight percent of that forty two percent. So it's not even, it's, it's, it's more than half. But it's, you know, it is not the dominant use. And one of the things to remember is this includes all the parkland, this includes churches, you know, city-owned properties, governmental, all the other government properties at the University of Michigan. So there's a lot of the city that doesn't pay taxes, property taxes. Next. And one of the other things, we actually have the residential and one of the things that's very interesting here and it gets to some of the density questions. And I, I think the density questions are are complicated because in one sense, some of it is a residential question. But in other cases, it's actually the density of the commercial properties. We don't have it here, but we actually did it on the residential. There are, you have commercial properties that have value per acre. That are more or less in line with a lot of your residential neighborhoods. And that's a function of how much activity is happening on top, sitting on top of that. And so one of the things that we, that we need to say. Is we need to drive more property value out of the commercial real estate assets that are not necessarily apartments. And that gets to some diversity, diversification issues around job base uses. How much of its retail, how much of it is R and D, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, going forward. Next. Questions?
Commissioner White.
I'll defer to Commissioner Hammer Schmidt since she hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you. I'll be quick. And also I saw this presentation two weeks ago, so I had an opportunity to ask some questions then. And actually, Kevin, I haven't been able to stop thinking about this, this part of the presentation, like.
Sorry.
No, in a good way. Except it kind of got me, I kind of started something in my community WhatsApp group. Because I think like people expect, you know, the property taxes here are really high. And I think people expect like to get all the services they need out of them. But in, in effect, like they're, they're too high for residential, but like we still are not generating enough money to. Plow everybody's streets ten minutes after it starts snowing. But my question is that I didn't think of last week and now I've forgotten it. This is why I wrote it down. So multifamily being taxed, it's commercial. Are those different tax rates between commercial and residential?
I, if I remember, you know what, I need to look that up. I, I need to check to make sure. Typically, the answer would be yes, but I need to check to make sure.
Yeah, I'm just curious. That would be a good thing to know, to understand.
I believe the tax rate is the same. As long as it's not owner occupied. So the unique thing about residential is when you have an owner occupied, that's where your homestead exemption comes in. And it gives you savings on some of the school tax millage. I think that, I believe, and we can follow up, but that the tax rate on a non. Homesteaded residential property would be the same as a commercial industrial tax rate.
Yes, I think that's, I think that's right, Brett. And also on top of that, it doesn't have the five percent growth cap to it. So one of the, one of the dynamics.
Commercial multifamily.
On multi, on the big multifamilies. Because one of the issues, and it's not, we don't have a complete clarity on this. One of the issues is our single-family homes that are kind of in the student area. Where there, you know, you've got four kids, allegedly only four kids in a, you know, sharing bedrooms in a house. Even though that's a rental property, it's still considered residential for tax purposes. Is from what we can gather. That's one of the things that we need to verify as well. But it's clearly the, if it looks like an apartment building, those are taxes apart, those are taxes commercial.
So for like larger condo buildings, can people claim homesteads since they're condo, but it's still taxed as commercial? Okay, so it's all, no.
And we need to check. I think that's, I don't know. I need to check.
In that case, a large building with condos, those are actually going to be taxed individually. And so those are going to be taxed. If you are owner occupied, then it's going to have the homestead exemption. If the neighboring condo does not, it's not going to receive that exemption. That's distinct from a building that's fully rental. That is taxed as a single entity. And I'll follow up. I think that's a number of units. It might be like up to four units is residential, even if it's rental. And once you go above four units, even a fully rentable rented. Residential development above four units is taxed as commercial. There's something in the tax code that shifts it into that category.
Yeah, it's defined at the state level.
Okay, I think that's right. I guess I might, the underlying thing to this question is just trying to think about like, what do we want to build more of to increase the tax base? Like, is it pure commercial from the commercial sense? Is it commercial model? Is it commercial residential? Is it duplex? That's sort of why I was trying to like tease out, like, what are these different tax rates? How do we get more money?
Well, that's the, so there's a, so there's a. That's a complicated decision matrix. Because there's going to need to be a balance between affordability. In the large commercial properties, they're probably valued not on a construction cost basis, but. Commissioner Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, they're typically going to be valued on a cash flow basis. So the higher the rent, the more of the building cash flows. And then when you look at the way your affordable housing fund is set up, you actually need. You actually need expensive housing to get built, to generate more money to go into that fund.
But just to provide a little bit of clarification, so principal residential millage is about sixty five mils. But, oh, I'm sorry, fifty mils. And if you're a non-principal, then it's about sixty five. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar property, it's going to be five thousand if you're actually living in the, you're an owner occupant. If you're not, it's a rental, it's about sixty five hundred dollars. The challenge actually, so the state statutory assessment practices. Provide for cost basis. So essentially it's like cost basis plus. The, it's like an ECF and economic conditions factor, but essentially it's the total cost of construction. Plus kind of an assessment class adjustment based on the economic factors. One of the challenges, and actually I had this discussion with the assessor, which was, hey, this is a question like. Are you incentivizing in essence like cheaper builds, like just wood frame stick? So that I can try to lower, you know, property taxes or, you know, should we, what, what is, you know, on a life cycle assessment basis? What's the most, more efficient type of, you know, construction type? And so we went kind of over this for a little while, but I think the. The important thing is when you ask, hey, like what type of, you know, residential, what type of product should we be building? I think the challenge that we see, we've interviewed a lot of different developers over the years and, you know, consistently. They actually say, developers are looking at how much are property taxes per, you know, how many cents per dollar of rent? Am I actually paying towards property taxes? Ann Arbor is actually quite high relative to, you know, and we think rents are high, but it's actually, you know, very difficult for things to pencil. Because I think it came out to be about like somewhere between twenty two and twenty five cents on every dollar is going towards property taxes. Relative to other communities, and this is the benchmarking analysis that I think we do have to, you know, run. To see how competitive we are, because there were some developers out of St. Louis that were like, wow, we're in like the teens, like. How am I supposed to make this work if, you know, twenty five cents out of every dollar is going towards, you know, property taxes? And so I think you're right, it is a very complicated question, right? Those are, those are barriers to entry and to, you know, making things work. And I think there's a balance to be made with, you know, I think there's another question about property tax. You know, assessments at the state level of like, if we're doing like the cost. For said, and Kevin, you're right, there's also a valuation from a capitalization standpoint. Right. So income capitalization, where you're saying, hey, this is my N O R, my net operating income. Divided by a cap rate and this is what the overall value is. And that, that's also where the economic conditions factor comes from. But I think there is a difficulty in, you know, I mean, is is income tax the right solution? Because right now, property taxes are making it difficult to really build a lot of multifamily. Whether it's mixed use, whether it's just apartment complexes, a lot of developers are looking at the community saying. What am I really penciling here for property tax? And if it's, if it's really, you know, twenty plus percent. And it's, it's going to, you know, oh, St. Louis is going to be much cheaper to build per dollar of rent. Because again, it's kind of a balancing act. They're going to say, based on, you know, things that they, the community might be asking for. I'll just take, you know, I'll just go lend and, you know, put my capital over in St. Louis because it's easier to build there. So I think we've seen, you know, from the socioeconomic kind of geographical disparities that we talked about earlier. As well as kind of the difficulties in aligning, you know, again, that tension between economic feasibility. Sustainability and social justice that we really have to take a look at, you know. It's not an easy question. How do we balance those three things? We've definitely recognized that more housing densification is kind of what we want to help effectuate. Property taxes are not necessarily in our purview, land use regulation is. And so I think we need to have a discussion about, you know, what types of, you know, zoning flexibilities? Do we need to, you know, help effectuate greater, not only economic development, but also housing development? So yeah, hopefully that answers your question with respect to. What type of product should we be building? Just know that the barrier to entry is going to be, you know, how much per dollar is going towards property taxes? So.
Yeah, just to build on that for a second. And that's why I go back to really thinking hard, which you guys are already doing with the TC one. Process, but I also think the balance between other kinds of jobs. With different kinds of income stratas and getting those people to be able to live in the city. And that really reflects on how do we get better utilization out of the existing commercial properties? Whereas you've got large parcels that are not generating a lot of value per acre.
Yeah, I just want to throw one more thing out there. I don't want an answer to this. This is something that I was thinking of as Commissioner Lee was speaking. We're getting all of these. Student housing development proposals. I feel like that's the majority of what we're seeing. And I just think it's, I, I made this up in my head, but I feel like somebody said at one point, like, these are the things that pencil in this city right now. And I, if that's true, I'd be curious to why. And then like. How does that, you know, like, how does that impact our equity affordability and sustainability goals? When the majority of like does it at all? Because I think there's also this narrative, like more student housing, it takes it out of these existing housing stock. And I'm not sure that I believe that. That's just something we keep hearing over and over.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's something when we get into some of the subject, the sections, particularly the housing. I think housing, housing is complicated in Ann Arbor because of the size of the student population relative to the size of the city.
Yep. Okay, I will turn it to Commissioner White.
Thank you. Can we go back to the forty two percent slide? All right, because that's the one I remember first. So one thing I think is helpful, again, as we begin to talk to the public. Is helping the public understand, like, for instance, that big blue block over by Stadium Boulevard. Is the Ann Arbor Public Schools. And the Ann Arbor Public Schools owns a lot of land in the city. And I think it's important for us to make a linkage to a slide that we saw earlier from Jamie. That in the city, the population that's declining the most would be considered young families. And but the schools, the school district owns a lot of non-taxable property inside the city. And I think it, because people think it's the university. So they, they're, they're blaming the university for taking our taxable land. And then they're asking the university to do a pilot, you know, payment in lieu of taxes. Which the university is not going to do because it's a peer governmental agency paying another agency to have property here. And that is lost on a lot of people. But then we have our school district. Who is sitting on top of a lot of non-taxable land. And I just think that that's helpful for people to understand as well as our commitment to our parks. So all of the things that we love about the city, how many parks, Mr. Leonard, a hundred sixty two? I always get the number wrong. It's some, it's a two, right?
Yeah, I don't remember the number. I don't want to, I don't want to guess.
Oh, come on. And so those things are important to us, but they then put us in these really tight bands. Where the only thing we can build is what Commissioner Hammer Schmidt just talked about. Our high-density student housing. Because one, they are contributing significantly to our tax base. Because as if I understood you correctly, they're not subject to the Haley, the Hadley Amendment. Which means that they can, they can grow. And I, I, I don't know, I know that Commissioner Lee said that it's not in our purview. But I think in terms of telling a story of how our city works. I think it's important for us to help people understand. Where the revenue is coming from. And that if we ignore that, it's to our peril is what I would start with. Can we go back one slide, Jamie? I'm sorry. And one more, is there another? Okay. I had a question, but I'm, oh, I think it, I think it's helpful to. Somewhere explained the, that apartments are considered commercial. And that that should flow in these presentations for people. So that they're not just thinking of like a grocery store here, but they're, they, they understand that it's an apartment. And how that impacts the taxes. Um, and how that impacts the taxes, because as, as I've said at the table, I've had to. Uh, learn a lot of things. And 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 one of the things that I've had to learn is these distinctions. And there's a slide somewhere where you show, it it may have been in an earlier part of your presentation, where you showed. Um, that from two thousand to two thousand twenty two, there's been six hundred and twenty three um units from the assessor. And but again, I think it's helpful for people to see that averaged out, that it's like two hundred and seventy eight. Units of some kind of configuration of residential and commercial housing. Uh, in the city, because when people look out at the city right now, all they see is cranes. So they're thinking the city is in this development boon. But when you actually aggregate it, you realize we're, we're only putting online two hundred and seventy five to three hundred units a year. So we're not actually seeing this kind of growth that when you look out, you feel like you're in. So those are just like things that I have had to suss out. And I just hope that as, as you're talking to the public, that you can help them. Understand what our challenges are right now as a city, uh, because I just don't think people are are tied in. I, at at least as what we hear from public comment at the planning table. I I think people feel like all we do is approve everything that a developer says they want to build. And even if that were true, it's still not going to solve our, our tax needs, which I think is what you're showing us here. And I think that's important for people to understand.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Dash.
Yeah, I just wanted to um underscore some of the questions that Commissioner White. Just asked, as well as I appreciated um Commissioner Hammer Schmidt and your intervention, one who, um, I mean, Chair. Lee, I wondered if we could break out A A P S and parks percentage of non-taxable land?
Yeah, we can.
That in the pers- it's not on the slide, so um. I mean, the slide, if you can do math really fast, the slide tells you that there's a whole lot out there that isn't the U of M. And many people think that U of M is all of it. But it would be great, as Commissioner White um articulated, to say, you know, here's our commitment to parks. We give up this much land to it, and then here's A A P S. Which I'm not sure what we're saying about that, but I'll just laugh, yeah.
One, one quick little caveat to that, though, in this, I mean, I don't know if this is true or not, we, we can take a look at it or or think about it. For a long time, I think the amount of land that A A P S has leased for the last couple of decades, and similarly, park space. Probably hasn't changed that much, but what we do see changing is U of M buying additional property. So in terms of what the nu- how the numbers have changed over the last twenty or thirty years, it's probably U of M driven. But still, the point remains, it's, there's a whole lot of land that's not U of M, that's not taxable too. So um, just a minor caveat there.
No, I think that's a really important point, because that does affect other policy decisions we might make as a city. About being a little bit more um active in preempting. You know, or in putting ourselves in a position to be able to take land that becomes available, some of it, if we think it would be useful to us. But that's another conversation.
Mr. Leonard, did you have something to add? I know you had your hand up for a sec.
I was just gonna compliment how impressed I was with Commissioner White. He said a hundred and eighty four parks, it's actually one sixty four. And his recollection of two of the three day digits was remarkable.
Actually, I said one sixty two, uh, just, just for the record.
I thought you said one eighty four, okay, so you're even.
No, no, that, that was in your mind.
Better than I thought.
Um, I wanted to make one plug here, because there was a slide a little further back about um current areas for potential high wage job growth. And the question, should we reserve space for future jobs? One of the things that I want to point out, I was at the Business Development Council with Spark this morning over at the Walker site. And, you know, in in my discussions with uh Jeff Blau, um, in in the short time that I got with him, I asked him, you know, how, what was New York like? And, you know, how, how did you really build, you know, how did you attract tenants? And he said, as, as uh landlords, it's like, it's really two things, talent attraction, talent retention. Like, you need a vibrant, fun town to be in, um, and we need to, I I personally think that we do need to reserve space for future jobs. That we have to create space for innovation to occur. The university is a great anchor. And it does create, again, like, a lot of patents come out of it, a lot of value, and like, innovation equals value, right? The quality of life is, you know, improved. Um, so I I do think that, I I gotta put an economic development, you know, plug here. Because it is one of the big drivers of our, of our city. And regardless of the fact that they, you know, we are in this symbiosis with the university. Um, you know, even though they, they're not necessarily um paying property taxes. That the innovation, the vibrancy that it brings to the town, um, we do need to make sure that we're recognizing that and creating, again. Reserving space for future jobs. One of the things that we talked about is that um, of our venture capital, of our startups. Um, ninety six percent of the funding comes from out of state. So when those startups succeed, all of that capital that gets raised and then like infused into those. They're going out, right? Um, we're about fifty fifty on whether we keep them. And then so, you know, we need to improve kind of our, um, whether it's series B, C, kind of a, you know, different capital stack raises. And and having the availability uh for these companies to stay and creating kind of an environment that is nurturing for, again, talent attraction and talent retention. So I do want to make sure that that's also, you know, kind of an important thing here. Um, I know that uh equity, affordability, sustainability, all of those are, you know, interplayed. Just want to make sure that it's, you know, uh, that we keep in mind that talent attraction, talent retention is going to continue to drive value. Uh, and and create, you know, vibrant areas. So just wanted to put that, you know, minor plug in there. I think with that, do we have any other questions before we move on? Okay, Sir Hively.
Oliver is taking over. Sounds good. Um, thanks, everyone, to get my moment in the spotlight here. Um, I think, you know, we've kind of been talking through a lot of these issues. And next section digs a little bit more into zoning and land use and kind of talks about those things that we can control. To the comment earlier through this process, as we look at future land uses and what that starts to mean for zoning. Um, so I think the, so what there was on the back slide a little bit, right? I mean, we're starting to tee up that conversation about what does land availability, development capacity mean for tax revenue? And kind of financial sustainability of things, so that's a big question. But next slide, um, and this kind of builds out and gives a little bit more specific numbers to some of the things that we've been talking about. So the city is about nineteen thousand acres. Next. Um, so one thing to remember, there are, you know, a a number of areas um. That are kind of islands of township, about five, a little over five hundred acres that are, you know, non-annexed land within the city boundary. Um, and then we also have to factor in what is the actual right-of-way area for all of our streets and other infrastructure-related things. And that's a little over three thousand acres. So when you start to pull that out, like, what is the actual parcel area of the city? Um, that's outside of the street right away, it's about fifteen thousand five hundred acres, next slide. And then, again, you know, to the conversation that we just had, pulling out um property that's in the public land, schools, parks. Hospitals, institutions, U of M, other non-taxable land areas. Um, so if we pull out that fifty six hundred acres, we're down less than ten thousand, keep going. Um, and then it's also worth recognizing to the earlier conversation about historic districts, but then also floodplain areas. Um, and particularly where a lot of high-value land is, is situated around those two areas, right? So um, while these, that twenty four hundred acres of floodplain and historic district land don't necessarily prevent development. They add complication and challenge to what can occur within those areas. And then, next slide. And then we just did as, a little bit as a thought experiment and said, you know, putting aside the question of how we densify our, our one and our two districts. Um, in various different ways, they're probably not gonna be changing rapidly wholesale. Um, you know, what we think of as a lot of the neighborhoods in the city. Um, so what is left on more of the commercial land uses, some of the higher density, you know, R three, R four? And then the assorted commercial land uses, you know, what are we left with? That's about twenty four uh, or excuse me, um, yeah, twenty four hundred acres is what's left. It's only about thirteen percent of the total city area that we have to play with. And, you know, what you see here on the map, if you think about a lot of these sites, um, a lot of this. Well, a lot of it is parking lot in a lot of areas, but a lot of it is also uh including, you know, multifamily apartment buildings. That have been built relatively recent. Um, so what is really the capacity to change in a substantial way? Or to increase the density within these areas that aren't already developed um in the, in the recent past? And are probably not that likely to change in the near future. So I, I think one of our assignments as a team is gonna be digging into a lot of these areas that you see here. And really start to understand what are the areas that might start to change, uh, what is some of the land uh capacity and development capacity in some of these areas? Um, and what does that mean ultimately towards, you know, housing taxes, things like that? Oh, uh, what's the next slide? So um, yeah, I think, you know, that's obviously one of the, the central, central challenges. And then going back to these areas that aren't um, aren't within that thirteen percent. You know, what are the tools and the options that we have to think about, you know, density, densification, other kinds of uh. Um, ways of reinvesting in these areas as well. Um, and those are strategies that we'll be, we'll be getting to through this process. So anyway, short, short segment there, but.
Mr. Leonard.
Yeah, uh, just go- going back to a couple of those last maps that Oliver shared. Another piece that I, I, I just wanna, I just wanna acknowledge. That the land use policies are not unlinked to our infrastructure. Investments and challenges in the city. So just from a, from a broad, very high level. Remember that a lot of the older parts of the city uh sometimes have older infrastructure. Um, generally speaking, um, south of the Huron River. Is more challenged from an infrastructure capacity than north of the Huron River. And that is probably the flip of how ideally we would desire that to be. When we're talking about the opportunity for densification, when you look at some of these areas and the like. So part of this is just not only making some of the land use decisions. But we have to be, I think, very upfront and honest that in order to achieve some of those. Might take some very strategic investments from the city from an infrastructure investment over time in order to realize those. And I just want to name it, that that is part of um, how at this point we're approaching it is really, um, frankly, not. Bu- by approaching it that way is not to ignore some of the infrastructure um opportunities. But to really envision a comprehensive plan like it can be, that is, this is our vision over the coming decades for our land use pattern. And part of that will be regulatory things that are in your purview as the planning commission, um, advising the council. And part of it will be the city making strategic infrastructure investments to make sure that we can realize that through the provision of. Water, sewer, stormwater, in addition to the connections that projects by projects might have to make. Um, so I just, I just want to be very upfront and honest about that, that that'll be part of the decisions that the city will have to make. In addition to some of the land use regulatory frameworks.
And just one other comment I wanted to add to, um, you know, Kevin had asked the question earlier, he put on the screen when he was talking about. Um, jobs and commuters in the city, and you know, how many people working in the city, you know, if they could live here, would want to live here. Um, just to throw out a couple of interesting things, um, we asked that question in the survey that's currently live. Um, still collecting survey records, uh, we have a little over two thousand responses to the survey so far, which is great. Um, and just doing a quick look at it, I think there's about three hundred and sixty people that responded that said they don't live in the city currently. But they're working in the city. So we had asked point blank, you know, how many, if you don't live in the city, you know, would you like to? And a little over half said yes. So, I mean, just, you know, we can obviously fine tune that as, as we go. But thinking about the seventy two or seventy six thousand jobs. You know, if half those people and their families at some household size wanted to live in the city, what does that mean? I mean, that could be upwards of eighty thousand people, which, you know, from a thought kind of experiment standpoint, that's potentially more than the number of permanent residents. That are here today in the city, uh, when you subtract out the student population. So, you know, I think one of the scenarios that we'll be doing kind of moving forward is, you know, looking at some high-level numbers like that. Looking at developable land area and then looking at assumptions about how, you know, other areas of the city might start to develop over time. And, you know, what are different strategies and ways that we can start to get at those numbers? And what, to Brett's point, is the, you know, public cost of having to do that too, so.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner White?
Just a quick question off of that, and uh, thanks, Oliver. Um, so. If I understood correctly, which I may not have, so we've got seventy six thousand people who are commuting in. If we extrapolate it from the survey responses, that fifty percent wanted to live in the city. So we're looking somewhere around thirty eight thousand folks. With that, how, how do you advise us in our comp plan? To say there are thirty eight thousand individuals and their families that would like to look, live in the city? You've got twenty four hundred acres that's potentially developable. Um, here's what we said, like, is that a question you're going to pose and then answer? As a part of your response to us, or is that something we raise and ask you to pose and answer? So if we can start there, and then I'll ask a secondary question based on how you answer that.
Um, I think, I don't, I don't know which, which direction we need to go in. I think it's a conversation that has to be asked, right? And that's one way of kind of looking at the long-term growth of the city. I mean, to the points that Jamie and Kevin shared earlier, there's clearly demand and interest in more people to live here. I think, you know, one of the values um from both an equity and the affordability kind of directive that's coming through this effort. Is to make it more achievable for people to be able to live and work in the community and be a part of it. And so, you know, I think there's a calibration question in there of like, well, we gotta put a number to that at some point. Of what we're working towards, like, how many people do we want to try to welcome into the community and and let them have a place here? Um, that want to be here. So I, I guess that's one way of, of getting at it from a, from a values perspective.
Can I jump in for a second too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I think that that is a great question, and it's something we are thinking about. Not just posing it purely theoretically, um, but starting to develop some what-if scenarios. Based upon the developable land and some of these other potential areas that are shown on the map here. To start doing some calculations, you know, to start playing around with some numbers to say. What, what could we build? And start thinking about bans of, of, um, you know, using the commuters as an example, right? So out of the seventy six thousand, if we're just gonna use that number, what if we're trying to house twenty percent? How many units is that? Could it fit? Forty percent? How many units is that? Could it fit? And we need to start creating some scenarios and playing around with the numbers so that we can have something. To pin these conversations to.
Oh, go ahead. Were you gonna say something, Kevin?
Well, I was gonna add to that, I think, um, and as we think about, I just did a quick calculation, you know, just taking Oliver's numbers. And Commissioner White, your, your comment about the twenty four hundred acres, that's sixteen units an acre. Um, you know, and that's not even, and there's another assumption, key assumption in here about, you know, let's, if we took the half as the proxy. We're assuming they're gonna wanna live vertically. And I don't think that's a fair assumption in the Midwest. Particularly if they have families.
Now, I mean, I lived vertically in a family, but, okay, I, your point is, is, is well taken. Um, so, Mr. Leonard, what's, what's that? That's R four C is twenty units per acre in our current residential? Come on, you have to have an exci- encyclopedic knowledge of ours. Come on, you have to have an exci- encyclopedic knowledge of our zoning code, Mr. Leonard.
That's why I have quality city planners on my team, Commissioner White.
So, so, so at a minimum. You know, we'll, we'll see, you're looking it up now, but at a minimum, then if, if I understood, um, Kevin, Oliver's and Stacy's response. If we just took. The residential zoning, we'd have to move it. From what it is to something that would permit more density. Um, as a given. And so that would be like citywide. In order to accomplish that, because we just don't have undeveloped. Wholesale land. Where we could put sixteen units per acre on it. And to Kevin's point, that's not all vertical. And then I think as you all help us with this, because I think this is what is, is key in a communication. To our community to say. We either have to make some wholesale. Changing and what we permit in our city. Or we have to basically say, this is it. This is our cap. Um, and we will have to start reducing services. In our city because the tax base. Will not be able to grow. Vis a vis the need of those tax dollars for infrastructure things. And then when we've done some small scale rezonings of high den- you know, low density to high density, and that's when I discovered. Oh, we can't just. Wholesale. Re- upzone the entire city, even if, even if the city was willing to say, let's just upzone the whole city to TC one, my dream. And, um, that's in place. We couldn't do that because as Mr. Leonard has pointed out, the infrastructure. Is not in place to accomplish that. So we've literally buried in the ground. These restrictions. To prevent us from achieving any of these density goals that we would have. And how do we pay for all of that? If we are constrained tax-wise. So those are things that would be, that's helpful for me to be thinking about. As, as your reports are coming back to planning. Is to say like, even with a wholesale upzoning. We would still have to identify these areas. Where the infrastructure is in place to manage it. Where there's accessibility to the things that we think are unique to the city. Um, that people want. And to Kevin's point, not everybody wants to live vertically. So how do we have different housing types? To make, um, the city attractive for the kinds of people, uh, who want to live here, but not be constrained to just one housing type. I think those things are really vital for, to be at front of mind in our conversations.
And just for the density, uh, R four B is fifteen dwelling units, R four C is twenty, R four D is twenty-five. So just to give you a sort of frame of reference.
And. And one thing I wanted to share too on this and, and thank you, Commissioner White for. For what your, your comments there. I think that's absolutely speaks to some of the crux of. The challenge that we need to unpack through this process. Um. You know, a couple of other interesting data points to share on that and, um. Was it Kevin or, or I can't remember who did the math on, you know, how many housing units you can fit in TC one or, or whatever that was, but. Our, our one D district. Um. Is around. If you just actually look at the number of housing units and the amount of acreage that's allocated to that today is around twelve units per acre. So something that's interesting is some of the older traditional. Um, style neighborhoods that have been cut up into apartments and housing, like it's actually pretty dense in there, even though it's not a big tall building. So there's, you know, there's a lot of wiggle room to be able to leverage both. You know, some combination of really tall, high-density buildings with things that are at. Also a neighborhood scale and other areas and get a pretty high. Average out of that at the end of the day. Um. Yeah, the thing I was gonna mention, I know there was that development proposal for the seven-seven-seven site, right? Which is down in the. TC one district. And I did the math on that at one point, although I can't find my notes on it, because I, was that like twelve hundred units, I think? New housing on twenty acres? So if you think about the average density of something like that, that was proposed, right? It's a pretty. That's a pretty high. Number of units per acre, which is. I think good from, from that standpoint of trying to. Um. You know, work towards that goal of more housing. So just wanted to mention that. Yeah, I think that averages out to sixty, yeah, so twelve hundred units over twenty acres, so that's sixty units an acre. Um, for that TC one proposal.
That's correct. And one of the things I do want to add, there's about seventy-eight thousand square feet of retail and hotels. So there's a, that kind of like. Land use element of, you know, live, work, play kind of concept. Um, I do want to, uh, try to do a reference reset of like deliverables, right? Because this comprehensive plan will be, you know, replacing the natural features plan, land use element downtown, sustainable framework in the, uh, state tree corridor. One of the things that I also want to, um, clarify is how important it is to just simply, uh, capture. What the community wants, you know, Ann Arbor to be as they grow up. And so I certainly, um, you know, while I think we have our kind of. Ideas about, you know, what? What kind of like pragmatic things should be done to improve sustainability, affordability and equity? Um, I think it's very important to continue to let the, um, you know. Have this inclusive process of like, hey, again, their feedback. And so. Um, and I think that that's the process that they have to go through. So just want to make sure like, we're not, you know. Preaching or, you know, normatively saying this should be it, guys. And so I, I don't wanna like sway, you know, um, but we, we also need to. Be objective about the presentation of context, right? Or like, this is the actual objective facts, uh, you know, surrounding it. So. Just wanna do a little bit of reference, you know, resetting, um, to say, hey, the, the comp plan, you know, when it gets presented, you know, in twenty twenty-five, right? Um, you know, towards the end thereof. Uh. It won't magically change the UDC. And then I think that it'll be, you know, up to the planning commission at that point to start to, you know, adopt. And, and start to make the kinds of revisions. And that are reflected in the UDC. So just wanted to, you know, procedurally set, hey, like, let's have that reset of. Um, just making sure that the community has a, you know. They're able to. Have that context set and then, and give their feedback about what they want Ann Arbor to be and for us to capture that holistically. So, um, I'm not just do a quick check on time. We're at eight forty right now. How much of the presentation do we have? Like, how, how, what percentage are we through? I just wanted to, all really good conversation. I certainly don't want to stifle it. Just wanna do a quick check.
I mean, this was really the end of the, you know, key facts that we were talking about. We, we have a little bit about, um. You know, the engagement and some of those stuff that's upcoming. So I don't know if it. Makes sense to jump to that. I know Stacy, there are a few slides about like, what if we do nothing? Do you think?
I think we can jump to engagement because some of that we share. And then. Me. So I think it'll be important. They've already, you know, affirmed these things. Let's, let's hop over to.
Yeah. And if we do have time, I would love to see the status quo. I haven't seen this presentation, but, uh, no, please, um, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. You cut up for one second.
Oh, I was gonna say, if we do have time, I would love to see the status quo. I haven't seen this presentation before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Our first meeting with the planning commission, uh. Couple of months ago, the, the planning commission kickoff, but, uh, I, Oliver, did you want to talk about engagement?
Sure, I can. Yep.
Go through it first. And then if there's time, we'll hop back into.
Yeah, just kind of a, a high level. Um, I think when we had met last, you know, we had conducted a lot of these interviews already, um. Uh, just. Range of folks from, uh, different interview sessions, mostly on the government kind of agency side, getting a, a handle around. Um, their perspective on what's working well, what's not working well, where the potential challenges and pitfalls may be. Um, next slide. So there is, the project's website is up and running. Um, the survey can be linked through that. So again, the survey. Um, is live right now. Uh, we don't have any set end date for that. We're gonna continue to leave it open for a while. Um, but as I mentioned earlier, we have a little over two thousand responses to date, which is, which is good. It's nice to see that level of engagement happening. And then, you know, as, um, content has developed. You know, through the conversations that we're having today, um, I think we've talked about, you know, having recorded this presentation. That can be made available on the website, for example. Um, so starting to get more of the information as the details of things are coming together, getting that posted on the website will be important. And next slide. And then just a recap, um, you know, towards the end of the summer and into September, there were a number of pop-up events. Um, that were held. So this was during, I think a lot of these photos were during the green, mayor's green fair event. And then U of M did a house party project too, also kind of looking at housing. Related issues in town and asking for public feedback on that. Um, I think, you know, this was a chance just at a high level for people to talk about what some of those key. Values mean and the kinds of things that they want to see in the city and the way that they want to see the city grow and evolve. And so to your point, um. Earlier about just making sure that we're engaging the community, it's definitely part of this process. Uh, next slide. Um, so speaking of that, um, one of the first kind of bigger engagement activities that's happening and we're getting the details of this pulled together right now. Is looking to do a community open house on March eleventh through the fourteenth. It's gonna be a multi-day event, we're thinking. Um, and. The idea of this open house. Is actually to combine a few other engagement activities that are happening at the same time. Um, the city and the DDA are. Have cooperated to do a downtown area circulation study. That's looking kind of in detail. At a lot of the transportation infrastructure downtown and trying to lay the groundwork for future. Capital projects and investment, um, on the transportation side downtown. Um. And. We have a lot of questions on the comprehensive plan side around how the downtown. Fits relative to the rest of the community. And kind of what the downtown's role is and what some of the opportunities are. So, um, the idea is to use this first open house. Um, to jointly tackle both those through a whole series of kind of open house events. Be some opportunities for sessions with stakeholders. Uh, to be brought into that process too. Um, and we're just laying the groundwork for that. Likely will be at the public library. So there'll be something that's up almost that entire week. Um, with some scheduled and programmed engagement happening at that location. Um, a lot of that will be focused on the circulation study work. But also pairing that with a look at. Um, the comprehensive plan overall and the comprehensive plan sort of specifically within the downtown area too, to start to tee up. Some questions, um, for the community. So. I don't know, Stacy or Jamie, if you had any other context for the open house from. Your perspective, you wanted to add to this.
No, I don't think so. I mean. Uh, we did have space for a few questions at the end, um, particularly about. You know. If you have thoughts about. Specific questions we should be asking in, in some of these engagement activities, um. So I don't know if we have time to, to dive into that too much right now, but just kind of throwing that out there as well.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, no, I think we have a few minutes. Um, this is slated to go till nine, um. But thank you so much for, uh, you know, first off, for, for the presentation. Do you have any other questions, comments from the planning commission? Commissioner White.
Um, just in terms of, a, a lot of people don't understand what the comp. Plan is and how it works. I did a, a presentation recently unofficially. At the Urbanist Club at the University of Michigan. It was like a five-minute. Um, twenty-slide sort of presentation. Um, and so like. How? People don't understand that the comp plan is a vision. Of what the city is going to look like in the future. They think the comp plan says what's permissible now. So it's the distinction between. In our structure, a comprehensive plan and a unified development code. And how those work together. People don't understand that the comp plan is made up of multiple documents. As opposed to a single document. And even though this comp plan's gonna replace five of our eight documents. There will still be three outstanding documents like the tree land, the, the tree line. Uh, policy and, and the others that are more recently adopted that will go into this comp plan. So helping people understand. That all of these documents. Give, um, vision to it, I think is something that would be helpful for the general public. Um, and people don't understand how development works. Um, I, I think people have a vague. Sense of how development works. But they generally don't. And I think the other thing that I am learning as I have these conversations. Is change is difficult for people. And we are generally engaging in emotional conversations. But we are using legal documents. To have emotional conversations. And I don't think people know how to do that. I think, um. It would be helpful for. Us to, um. Also acknowledge that people make social contracts. Uh, that are largely unstated. When they move into a neighborhood or a community. And. This comp plan will feel like that social contract is being broken. So I bought my house here. With an expectation that I would have a single-family house next to me. And now you're saying to make space for these. Invisible people, because I don't see these seventy-six thousand people. Because I'm in my neighborhood. To live here. I have to have this change and I don't know what to do with all those feelings. And then people don't understand that their taxes, while high. Don't pay for everything.
Yeah, I mean, that's all important, um, context as we, you know, dive into the more public. Aspect of this work. Um, I think some of the stuff that we, we kind of breeze through it upfront in the presentation. I think we're gonna spend some more time about, you know, what is a comp plan, all of that stuff. Um, and then as a team, we've been. Brainstorming about. We're calling them like educational pieces, you know, things about like how development works, um, and some various other things to really just kind of. You know, stated in, in simplistic terms, but just so, you know, there's, people are kind of coming in. Add it, some of these questions with that context.
Thank you. Any other planning commissioners with questions, comments? Um. Give it another second. Well, seeing none, thank you so much for coming to give this presentation. Um, very, very informative. We appreciate all the work you're doing on the backend. So. Very, very helpful. Um, with that, um, Brett, I think we're, we're just moving to essentially. A germent at this point, or, um, are, are, are there any other questions, comments that you wanted to address?
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you very much. Again, uh, this recording, uh, will be posted and it'll be able, available to link. I think it provides a good, um, baseline for where we're starting. Um, we've got a lot of, um, questions and recommendations that, uh, the team and I will be following up on. Just a couple, uh, reminders, the survey is open and active. Um, you can find it at. Plan dot A two gov dot org slash plan twenty-four. Um. Uh. Like, as indicated, we're gonna keep it open at this point for a while. At some point, we will announce that we'll be closing it at some point. Um. We also have an open, uh, comment forum available on the website that was referenced. So if folks, uh, beyond the survey, just have thoughts, questions, uh, feedback that they provide, that that's available to them as well. Um, and we'll, of course, we'll be keeping, uh, the commission and the public aware as, uh, the plans for that open house get refined. So, um. Um, I would ask you, uh, like we are asking the steering committee, um. Share that survey with your networks, um, um, if you haven't, um. If you, if we can help, we've provided, you know, visual, social media content, um, we do and, um. And we, we desire to have as many responses to that as we possibly can. So. Um, if there's anything I can do to help, um, you distribute that, or if you have questions, um, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. And, uh, thanks to the team and thanks to the committee tonight.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to a germent.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.